RJ, you were recording?
Yes.
You guys are starting.
He's playing that Bruce game.
I know. Have you played Candy Crush?
Yeah. You've got it on the week's 17.
Oh, yeah.
So, we left off...
We finished the spreadsheet that I had on the board, so I've updated from number one. There was never ever a seven. I went back and verified. It's just, you can look at my spreadsheet for Excel. It's just a bad number. And we left off with ability and equipment. Fund and not, we've got one at this point, but talking about it at a strategic plan level. And we're revisiting that. So, the last item was the driving region. That we said we're going to talk about. I mean, at this point, we're not talking about that. So, we're at MBQs.
Okay. So...
Question, please?
Oh, sure.
Yeah? Out of numbers one through wherever we left off, how much of the money is new money that's being added to the budget?
None of it is new money. Well, number eight is new money being added. That was what the hotel motel. We had extra revenue coming in in the second or the fourth quarter of this year to be able to do more and still leave a healthy reserve account.
To make sure I'm on the right thought level, isn't that usually just like a pass-through? It goes, it's created by the hotels and it goes back through the tourism and then back through the board out?
Correct.
Okay. So, other than that, is there any additional monies that make the budget larger than what we've been considering for the last several weeks?
Don't they all?
Yeah.
We have now received additional revenues for the ones over here. There's additional resources. These do increase the budget appropriations.
Okay.
Except, what we decided here, right now, is originally this budget was $1.27 million to do these signals. We've made a motion to at least do one signal at signal, which is $600,000. So, that would reduce what is in the budget for Street Capital because now we're giving the revenue for that on there.
So, the net change to the budget on that one is an increase of $200,000? Or what's the net change to the budget?
Net change to the budget. We had an additional $200,000 from the general fund to help do the signal. There was only $400,000 of city money in that fund to be able to do the projects because we're anticipating the TIB rent. We don't have that grant, so by $800,000 and some change goes away. And then we need another $200,000 to do the city.
RJ, if I could offer...
To do the one signal.
Point it forward.
One signal.
So, when Olden and Councilmember Kaminsky are asking about increasing the budget, I think what they're saying is these changes identify additional funds to be appropriated. So, they don't change the budget per se. They, what they do is they appropriate these dollars to be spent. For instance, the irrigation is $1.3 million. That's in addition to the budget. That's in addition to the existing budget. Right. So, it's a net change. Our balance, our cash flow is going to go down.
So, RJ, I, you know, I see the frustration, you know, that comes across when you have to try to explain some of this stuff to us. I think, you know, you're smart enough to know what we're really asking. I believe that part. So, tell us what the right questions would be. What's the right questions that we should be asking yet so that you won't feel so frustrated at trying to communicate that financial lingo to us?
So, each of these items that we talked about, we took them one at a time. Each of these items has some kind of impact to the budget. So, it may be good to go and review each item one by one to tell you what this increases. This is an increase to the expenditure in the general fund. This is an increase into this one.
Okay.
Is there new money to pay for this? No, this would come out of the existing cash balance that we have in the general fund. So, I don't think you can make that bigger? Or is that...
No, to me, that makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we do have some increases to the budget.
Correct.
And we're going to be finding the revenue in cash balance slash reserves?
When we use the word reserve, that makes me go to the Fund 120, which is the reserve fund. And that's not what we're going to. It would be ending cash balance.
Ending cash balance.
Anything that's not marked as special.
All right, great. Thank you for clarifying that for me. And by the way, just so we can all be on the same page, what is our ending fund balance for 2017 as projected?
Budget was... Beginning estimated fund balance at the end of '17 is $4 million.
And did you say beginning?
So, I started saying beginning because my brain is thinking 2018. But the ending cash balance projected at the end of '17 is $4 million.
Thank you.
Questions?
It's my understanding that we had $400,000 in that fund already for those lights. We're simply taking $200,000 and adding to that, and that comes out of the general fund.
Correct.
That $200,000 is strictly from general fund. It's not coming from anything we appropriated in any specific fund. So, it's not reducing any other specific fund by $200,000.
Other than the general fund?
Right, just the general fund.
Just the general fund.
Yep. Thank you.
One thing before we move on to MBQs on Tuesday. We were going to add a number 12 on there. So, it's going to be the discussion between the...
Yeah.
The range.
Number 12 was...
No, sorry. Add 12, not the range. That is the discussion between do we keep 680 target to be appropriate for the North Ball Field quarter? Do we consider re-reckon that to a second signal? So, we split out that number 10 that you got labeled here that we need to talk about in several lines.
So, we did talk around a lot of different subjects. What I didn't know is what we got to last night as we ended here and that there were still MBQs to get into. And then if we're going to go talk about the field and the other signal, that would happen tonight as well.
Okay.
So, I didn't actually... I think we've kind of canceled a number in, but I don't think we actually did anything so...
Correct. So, we're going to talk about that after we talk about MBQs tonight. So, you're going to... We're on the topic now?
Yeah.
Discuss. Steve, write it up. All right. Everybody go first?
Yeah.
And I know the special meeting went on. Andrew here helped us some of it. I hope Katie can answer on it. I think my biggest question, I appreciate all the conversation on Tuesday about the importance of a signal at signal. The top priority, the signal at Madsen being a second priority, but it's still a matter of public safety or traffic congestion or some combination of those. So, I see public safety being generally the biggest, but says our top priority. And we've got $600,000, roughly the same amount in the budget for a North Ball Field. I'm wondering how we go about prioritizing the lights versus a ball field in the budget. They were kind of choosing one or the other. I guess that's the topic I wanted to talk about. It makes good sense to me to say we really need signal. We could probably push the next, the end of the next year. And oh, by the way, if we push it here, we might find grant funding for it. Is that accurate?
It is. And I think, let me take a stab at answering this. One is, we do have an email from Dan Dunn. And Anne can read it into the record. But in essence, what it says is it suggests that the council approve half of the funding for the North Field and that staff move forward with coordinating with Centralized School District on a project. And so, obviously, that could be a great subject for a future workshop. So, he would just put his suggestion to the council is put half the funds in there. So, that's kind of the ball field thing. On the traffic signal, I'll kind of, I thought about it a lot today, so I'll share with you kind of my thinking. So, we did a traffic study, spent $50,000, which was really important because we were able to justify and prioritize our transportation projects. Out of that came that both signals, the traffic signal at signal is in more need than the one at Madsen. But there's also several hot intersections around town. When I say hot, there are intersections we're watching because as we grow and as the traffic volume increases, the operational challenges become apparent. And those intersections are Legacy Ridge and Country Vista. And the other one is Mission and Country Vista right by Albertson's. Their operation is becoming challenging to, for traffic to enter and move and turn safely. Madsen's in that same category, but because it's along Appleway and because it's along the freight corridor, we packaged that, those signals, because it was freight corridor money. And that would seem logical to put them together. If we did, and we didn't get funding from the freight corridor folks, and then we did not get funding from TIB either. So, I think it's good that we kind of pause for a minute and rethink, what should we do now? And certainly, you could take the funds from the ball field and put them to the traffic signal. I would just say that one traffic signal will help. The second one is needed. Is it important that we do it right now? The answer is no. And is the likelihood that we're going to get funded in the near term possible? Yes. So, I would think that for a couple hundred thousand dollars, we should pause on Madsen, keep our money, watch all these other intersections because there could be another intersection that rises to the top. And once we get the traffic signal and signal, then we can assess. I don't know if that helps or not, but I would just say that we package them together because they're in our freight corridor. And they were, there were some efficiencies in doing that. But now that we don't have freight corridor money, we didn't get TIB money, I think we could revisit the priority. I'm sorry, Shane.
Oh, you're fine. Kind of a comment and then a question. Oh, I guess I'll do the questions first. So, when you talk about Mission and Country Vista, you're talking about east or west?
I'm talking to one right by Albertson's, right out here.
So, I think that itself, just looking at it from a traffic load standpoint, that's so close to Country Vista and Legacy, or sorry, Liberty Lake Road light, that could be almost more troublesome from a traffic standpoint.
So, we're thinking non-street traffic signal?
Right. You just brought it up, so I...
Yeah.
And then secondarily, when we look at Legacy Ridge and Country Vista, and you're talking about that overpass by Henry, if you put in an overpass, then you're going to have to put in a light. So, if you have a light at Henry, do we need one at Legacy Ridge and Country Vista? Because you're already slowing the traffic down coming into town.
So, just to be clear, what we're, and again, this is very preliminary.
Right. I understand that. But as far as what I'm thinking...
I'm not thinking of a traffic signal at Henry. I'm thinking of a roundabout. And I'm thinking of a roundabout at Legacy and Country Vista as well. And then a roundabout at...
They're all in close.
The one at Albertson's as well. But anyway, I think you're right. We have to look at it all, at the end of the day, how it all functions together. It's, you know, I don't want to, three-legged, three-sided intersections. And I wish Andrew was here because he could explain it better than I could. Three-legged intersections with a traffic signal is challenging. Even though at signal, that's the case.
I guess one of the issues I have in kind of this discussion is timing and implementation. So, we can talk, we can put more money in there or take money out, whatever. But reality-wise, in my thought, you know, we'll put the traffic signal at signal. And even if we order the parts, we probably wouldn't get to it until 2019. That's just my thought. It's kind of the same thing. You're looking at down the road, I think one of the, if you wanted to take some money in 2018 budgets and say, we want to look at signalization or roundabout design, it may be more appropriate to kind of try to put some kind of a design of Mission, Country Vista, Liberty Lake Drive, and kind of Madsen on the back end of that thing to kind of create the design of what you're going to need maybe in '19. Twice, if you plan your budget around those things. You know, that's kind of what we're talking about.
The traffic study leaves that decision open for either signals or roundabouts.
And then the other thing is the grants and the funding that we're going to reach the money.
Mike?
I'm sure some of the trouble in my statement is that I'm against ball fields. And if you choose to, that's your prerogative. I'm not against a ball field. But for me, what I try to look at is the priorities and the money we have for it. If it's recommended, we have two traffic lights. And granted, we can have more traffic lights as time goes on. If we have the money set aside, something that we can postpone till next year and get the traffic lights both at the same time, I think that makes good economic feasible judgments versus taking in protected 680 or half of that on something that really is not a public safety issue. Now, if it is, tell me how it is. I can certainly change my opinion.
Well, I think, I guess in my head, I mean, there was, this whole discussion started around, you know, we put in number 10, they're a street capital fund. We talked about a signal. And RJ says, you know, are we going to... Discussion included looking at the priority of the North Ball Field. You know, why bother to put that in there on the fact that, hey, there's other funds available? But you're not, just public safety may be the number one priority in our community. I mean, if you don't have the safety, you don't have a community. But the other piece of the puzzle is that it's only a part of that community base, you know? If you don't have parks, if you don't have good streets, if you don't have all this other stuff. So, I mean, this is what this whole budget discussion is about. It's not like I'm choosing a ball field over a street light. Hell, if, you know, if you want to put $600,000 in street light one and street light, another $600,000, street light two, and you want to put $600,000 in the ball field, you probably could. If that's what you want to do. I mean, so it's not a, you're trying to prioritize, I think, some of the stuff. Even if you look at 2018, '19, you know, what reason we have sometimes significant ending fund balances, we don't spend them. We plan it, we budget as a planning document of, you know, where it can go. We don't necessarily have to go spend that money. It's available there to spend or come back and spend. Budget minutes allow people to come back and say, oh, God, we had this thing that we really have a wonderful opportunity. We could do a budget, whatever. There's funds available to do all this thing. I think the discussion tonight, in my head, is around, you know, and even it's going into this 2009, we're talking about, you know, a strategic planning process, you know, all that stuff that's going to feed into making more logical, supposedly more logical decisions as opposed to, oh, we've got $600,000 bucks here. Let's go do two lights, you know? Again, I kind of go back to my first statement last case statement was, that was freight money that was helping to pay for two lights. We didn't implement one light. And I think sometimes if you implement one light, you feel, you find a change in the traffic patterns or whatever, you know, that make a big difference. Again, going back to my statement last, on Tuesday night, you know, we put in intuitive lights at Liberty Lake Road and Appleway and Country Vista. And the traffic has improved 60% as far as efficiency, you know? And so, if you put a light in the signal, what kind of improvement will you get there? And then maybe you don't need that down the road. Maybe, you know, changes are being made at different suppliers that we don't need, we don't have that freight traffic. I mean, that was one of the issues that came up even in that grant. So, I guess I don't want to, I would like the council to look at this budget as, these are the things that we're trying to implement this year. There's a reason for them. If you think that, and in Dan's case, and I, we all have, I'm probably sure a different opinion of those ball fields up by the school. And again, it's like, well, let's, you don't have to put the money in. You're going to have to take it out. We're not going to spend it until we come to the council with a plan from the school district buys in, the city buys in, and the designers buy into saying, hey, this is what we wanted to do at the school. Do you like it or don't? Quite frankly, if you, if we brought back a plan and first of February, and it was, you know, paved in gold or whatever it was for $600,000, and here's what we recommend, and you go, well, I don't want it paved in gold, so we're not going to do that. Quick, it's off, it's out of budget, and on the next. I said, so that's kind of where, you know, on the budget process, we're trying to get information so you can make a good quality decision to go forward with a project. It isn't just a project. It isn't just that we want to put some ball fields up. What kind of ball field? What do they need? What's the school need? What do the kids need? What does the community need? We're not going to just put lights in there without a traffic studying what we want. Bob?
Yes, thank you very much. I don't mean to oversimplify things, but, you know, the city has a capital improvement plan, six-year plan. And all these projects are included in that capital improvements plan. And I think what we're trying to do tonight is decide which of those projects do we want to fund in the 2018 budget? And those are the only decisions that we're, you know, that we're making. I agree with the mayor. I think on traffic light at signal, we don't know what the impact of that's going to be on traffic until it's in and is operational. I think after that time, I think we can find and decide whether or not we need another light. As far as the ball field, I think that is one of the decisions we have to make along with the other, all the other assets that the city owns when we start doing our strategic planning. I don't know what the priority of that is. It's not a high priority right now because I don't know what the other priorities are that the council's going to decide on. But I think it would be a mistake to decide on that right now. I think everyone agrees that public safety is one of the priorities and the lightest signal is a priority of city council. So, I don't really have a problem funding that signal. I have a problem funding other parts of the capital improvements plan that we haven't discussed or prioritized or evaluated. Thank you.
I think, I've taken in consideration, Bob, your ideas, which I've always appreciated, of really trying to plan out, strategize, think ahead, so we aren't going, sure, what it could have. And so, I don't know who said it, Odin or Mike. Somebody said it the other night on Tuesday. What kind of impact do we need to plan for, for that RV park going in? And even with that signal there, how's that going to affect the traffic? It's going to affect it, period. I predicted two years ago that we're going to need a light at signal. And we need a light at signal. So, I don't want to be backtracking and say, dang, we should have put in that light at the other intersection when we're getting complaints about traffic. So, I respect Mike's thoughts, as well as yours, Bob. But we need to really think this through and think about that impact of that RV park going in and how that traffic's going to affect us. And not have a knee-jerk reaction like we've done in the past to that situation. I don't want, I don't want to put us in that situation again.
I agree with that. I think that the, you know, we tried the no left turn sign there, but that certainly didn't work. It wasn't effective.
Right.
So, I don't think it's a trial and error thing. I think from beginning, what I think we all recognize is the need for a light there. And the other, the other part of that is, you know, how's it going to be set or scheduled, you know, to move traffic through there? That's the part that I'm, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I can't predict that or project what that's going to be.
Katie, you and I discussed this briefly today. Do we understand what that cost difference would be if you did them both in one shot as compared to...
I don't, I don't want to throw a number around.
I just, I was curious if you guys had it. If not, if I...
Yeah. I don't think you're going to save on the materials or the materials. The construction might save a little bit. But I don't think the savings, the town's member would offset the outside funding that you would get. So, let's say hypothetically, you might save $10,000, $20,000, $30,000 on mobilization and those things. But it wouldn't be enough that would be offset by the... Boy, that static is irritating. It wouldn't be, I'll talk loud. It wouldn't be enough to offset if we got outside funding. That would be...
No, I don't disagree with you. I think we should always try to go for outside funding.
And then kind of...
I just don't want to worry, I just don't want to rely on that and then have it not happen to go, dang it, we should have put those funds in there.
One thing, it's come up a couple times, and I think it's really good because I had the same question. What is going to be the ingress and egress out of the RV park? And so, I'm not, I don't have that information tonight. I can't talk about it. But I know that they do have to do a traffic plan. We have to review it and approve it. And that the trip generation from an RV park is different than the trip generation from other things. But I want to bring that back to the council and show you how they plan to get in and out of there and how that would, you know, lay out. They're also, and I don't have the dollar amount, they also have to pay a Harvard Road mitigation fee. And so, there's a certain dollar amount that would be coming into the city for that. So, and they have to do frontage improvements. And so, there's, you know, there's a whole lot of things I can't answer tonight. But we'll bring it back, the entrance.
Would it make any sense to update the traffic study we had done to amend it to include the RV park and what impact that might have on the traffic flows?
So, I will go back and confirm, but what our engineer did was, he took all the land use in Liberty Lake that was even vacant, and he programmed it to be built. And then they assigned trip generation to that. So, it's been incorporated into, you know, he does the existing and then he does the future. So, those trips have been incorporated into the future report that he did.
But we, he didn't know specifically at that time that there was going to be an RV park there. He just knew what the zoning was.
Correct. And then what you do is that kind of zoning generates X number of trips. So, I'll go back and confirm what his assumptions were. But kind of up and down Appleway, because even as you go, you know, east of Appleway, there's a lot of vacant property there, especially around the Multer and Madsen area. So, he did his analysis based on build-out of that entire area, including the RV park.
Honored to be with it. I appreciate the idea of separating this out over time. Our city engineer is okay with it. He knows a lot more about traffic studies than we do. Here, the, yes, let's do signal. And I'm good with waiting on it because I think there may be a lot of these, in Congress, are just potential grants. We don't end up getting a grant. Out of curiosity, just, just for our own knowledge, roughly, when would you expect to kind of know we got to approve it?
Okay, so TIB, you apply in August and you find out in November.
So one year from now.
Yeah, so August of 18, if we, we will put in the application and we'll know in November whether or not we got it.
Correct. Fine.
Question?
Yeah, Bob, or Mike?
When we, let's say we get that, that funding, we find out in September, October, whatever it is, are we still looking at about two years down the road by the time the light would be installed?
So, no, so once you get the funding, that you have to design it, our designs are essentially done. So then you order the apparatus, and then you have to schedule the installation. The lead time is about six months. And then in Spokane, it's when does that six months hit? Because it's very difficult to do the installation in the, in the winter months. But your, your goal is to get the long lead time things ordered so that you can go right to construction.
Thank you for that answer. I apologize, I should have asked the question. I'm sure we're going to go ahead with the Signal. How long will it be before that, realistically, that's installed?
So you're telling me when that signal?
Yes.
So if you give us the go-ahead today?
Right.
Then Andrew will prepare the bid documents, and we will procure the long lead time items, and we'll bid for the installation, construction and installation of a traffic signal. Mike got, and based on what Andrew said at the last council meeting, it'd be in the June, July, August timeframe for the installation.
Okay. So come next year, let's say we apply, and let's say we find out in September, October, that we would get the funding, that light wouldn't be installed until, like, 2020.
No, definitely.
The second, 2019.
2019.
Because right now, we're, we're scheduled to put two lights in. If we would have got the funding, we would have had them done this summer, but because...
Later part of 2019.
So the traffic signal, yeah, the traffic, so for clarity, the traffic signal at Signal, if you approve it tonight, will be probably installed in June, July, or August of 2018. And then if we apply and get funding for the one at Mattson, then it would be June, July, of August of 19.
And the dollar amount that we would need to come up to if we got funding would be, like, existing now, but I understand, like, we were budgeting about $200,000 for each light. So in that proposal, $600,000, you're going to have about $200,000.
Correct, so it's a percentage, but yeah, you have to pay, is it 30 or 30, you know, 30 to 35%?
It depends on that, but depending on where, from 25 to 25.
Got you for telling that. That's good, Mike. Thank you.
So if I, if I may, the way I've thought about this, and Katie, if I'm wrong, just jump right in and say, no, that's not the proper way to think about it, but we're, we're preparing to do some work at some point on Harvard, to get, to put an extra lane in to move this traffic out. That's step one. Step two, to promote the further flow, they needed light at Signal. Step three, to promote further traffic, traffic flow through Signal, then alternatively also through Harvard, the Mattson light is needed. So it's going to take, and this was what the traffic engineer said when he stood right, or sat right over there, was that, yes, he had taken into consideration up until 40 years, I believe, was his words, 40 years in the future of the traffic being generated. But they all agreed at the time that this was a three-prong attack to move and relieve that, that roadway. So now, after spending $50,000, we're finding out, well, maybe that's really not necessary to have the light at Mattson. So the plan's changing. I, I got two questions. One, is the light at Signal truly needed? And is it a public safety function that drives the installation?
Let me answer the last question first.
Sure.
So there's three things that go on with making a decision on a traffic intersection. Capacity, operation, and safety. Capacity is not a problem. Operational is a challenge, and public safety is a challenge currently today as we speak at Signal. So what's happening is we've had, and I don't know how many crashes, Brian?
I don't have the exact number, but...
More than one?
Yes, several.
Several. So that's a safety problem for us. And operationally, that's creating problems because we're losing circulation because of that. People aren't going, using Signal to take a left-hand turn because it's too dangerous. So they're, they're plugging up into other intersections, okay? So that's kind of why the signal at Signal is more important than the others. If you look at the crash records at Mattson, and it's none, I don't know, fewer, significantly fewer. So that's why the signal would be the priority. And you're absolutely right. When he spoke about it, I think he, he did his traffic study for 2040. So I think it's a 20-year look, build out of everything, and then you start assigning grades to all of your intersections. And our, inner, our Appleway is, I call it an F minus. It's worse than bad. And what you can do to improve it is first change the signals that we did last year, widen the bridge, and put in the two traffic signals at Mattson and Signal. And that will get you up to probably, say, a D at buildout. But remember with, with, this is at, this is more long-term than short-term. Because we don't have the widening bridge, the bridge widening project on the queue right now, we want it to be there in 2020, I don't think that the additional two signals on Appleway are necessarily time-sensitive. I think when, in the long run, when we get the, the additional lane on Harvard Road and the two traffic signals, then we will get the full operational advantages that he talked about. But we're not going to get that additional lane. And just to be clear, just to clarify, this Harvard Road resurfacing, that's not the bridge widening.
Right.
Yeah, that's the gap.
Right, right.
That's just resurfacing the gap.
So when you, did, did I understand you that you said the other two lights on Appleway?
The other, when I say two lights, one at Signal, one at Mattson and Harvard, those were what he, they identified.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And then the other thing I'll just mention, that this kind of all comes together because there is kind of that master plan, is when we build the bridge, we put a dedicated right turn lane on Harvard, excuse me, not on Harvard, on Appleway, onto Harvard.
Right.
There, so that you have that right turn lane. Right now, it's a shared right turn lane. It would be a dedicated right turn lane.
So is it, is it your position then that the signal at Signal is needed and is needed to be funded in 2018? Not maybe built, but funded?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So that kind of gives us an idea relative to that one signal. So.
We need a motion to...
So after 35 minutes, what question were we trying to answer?
Ten.
We started with a field and ended up on the second light, but we went back to the first one, which is already in the budget. So the signal at Signal is in the budget. You meant you already, to be a member.
We agreed on that.
And if I'm hearing everyone saying, right, the second one, we're going to pause on the signal at Mattson. We're not going to fund that one, but it's in the works to go after the grant funding in 18. And then the third piece was the field.
And if we could, Dan sent us a statement. Is it all right if we read Dan's statement into the record?
Sure.
It's related to the field.
The North Field Project has two primary value points in my perspective. Liberty Creek Elementary has been designed to include great play and playground facilities for its students, but Principal Kim Kyle has personally asked me when the open field north of the school will be seeded to grass. Her need to have, her need is to have additional open outdoor play for special activities during seasonal good weather. There is a critical shortage of regulation-sized multi-sports fields in our community and region. Anyone involved in leadership of soccer, football, and lacrosse, both for youth and adult recreational, is hard-pressed to find lined regulation game field space during play sessions, seasons, excuse me. The North Field Project addresses a material need for specific recreation space for our residents and community. The City of Liberty Lake jointly operates the green space of the Liberty Lake Elementary Campus with Central Valley Schools. I propose a 2018 budget line of $375,000, approximately half the proposed project cost, in order to allow staff to engage Central Valley School District in a possible joint development initiative to complete the project. With best regards, Dan Dunn.
So my first question is this, all right? And I apologize ahead of time if I stomp on anybody's feet, but with that said, this started out a long time ago as just a field, just an open area. Then somehow or another, it got labeled a park. Now, a very short time later, it's been labeled a ball field. Number one, why are we doing this at all? I wasn't part of the negotiation with the school board to obtain that, that piece of property. No one here was that I'm aware of, outside of maybe staff. Secondly, why are we spending public money, tax money, on improving that field for the school board's use when the school board saved a heck of a lot of money when they built that place to begin with? And now to make it more palatable within the last 72 hours, it's been discussed, well, would you go for half of it? Unless something seriously, seriously changes. No. I won't go for half, a quarter, or none of it. Give them back the property and say, there's your field. Do whatever you want to it. Because we already have the citizens paying it through the bond, and now we're going to charge them again through the city. So they're paying twice, in my humble opinion, for that field. And that's the way I see it. If, if in fact that's the wrong way to look at it, because you're using two cities or two entities, taxing entities' funds, well, then explain that to me, because I don't want to be looking at it wrong. But I can tell you now, why we're even getting involved in this is beyond understanding.
Jane? Remind me how much money the school was under budget when they built that?
Around a million dollars.
Around a million dollars, if I remember right?
Yes, around a million dollars.
Thank you. That's what I thought. I get frustrated, I think, when the school says, hey, when are you going to do that field? We need to get it done. Well, then do it. Knock yourself out. You guys had it, you were a million under budget, you guys could have went and done it. You guys said, hey, we have extra money. We're going, we're going to do that field if you don't mind. Perfect, great. I don't think it's fair to the city. I don't think it's fair to the citizens or the school to dictate that we finish that field. If they want to finish it, they can finish it. We haven't even talked about our master plan. We haven't talked about our capital facilities plan. And to have a school try to kind of push our hand, I'm not saying that's what they're doing, but I don't have any other word for it, to get that done, I'm with Odin on that. It just, it's not, give it back to them and let them do it.
So just to... I agree with that. At our, our last meeting, we declined to fund the reserve replacement of police vehicles. Part of the preparation effort that was, that it would be premature to do that, because that should be part of our strategic planning. And in the context of, I would say, this would also should, should be in the context of our strategic planning. This property that we own, we have to decide what we're going to do with it. We also have to decide what we're going to do with Town Square, to decide what we're going to do with the golf course, what we're going to do with City Hall, what we're going to do with the library, all those things. And we can't keep making decisions on individual segments of the strategic plan and not include it in the strategic plan. Thank you.
I'm not going to reiterate what Odin and Jane said. I agree. I just wanted to add, you know, the school district decided that, yeah, they decided on that half of that property what they were going to need for the school and for their play yard. And they decided basically, this is my understanding at least, what they were going to sell back to us. What has changed? Why, what changed between them not needing that for their kids, because they're small and they don't use much of equipment and much space, to now, all of a sudden, they need the use of this space? That's really kind of hard for me to, to understand and comprehend.
So right now, this is in the budget at $680,000. So if there's a motion to take it out, then we could...
I'm moved to remove that line. I'm in the budget.
Second. Move it, Sarah. Any further discussion?
I'm really not trying to be overbearing, but somebody had to make the decision that this was a good idea. And I would really like to hear the reasoning behind that, because if somebody thought it was good enough to actually put it on the budget and attempt to fund it, they must have been thinking about something other than what Odin was thinking about, which is just the spending of taxpayers' money. What, what was the benefit? And I'm sure that somebody thought there was a benefit to this. And I'd like to hear, before we just say, final, no, I'd like to hear from the other side that says, wait a minute, this is why it was thought to be a great idea.
So when you say the other side, are you talking to me, Odin, or are you talking about plenty of other council people? That's the question I have.
Well, sir, I believe that you're probably the one that was involved in the deal, so I guess that would be you.
Okay. First of all, let's go back to when we acquired the property, which is 20 acres, which was a $10 deal, and yes, I was involved in that deal, and that property fell into city hands. That year, 2012, 13, this council, you were on that council, sat down and decided, we're going to build four ball fields out there. You designed it, you funded it for two ball fields, parking, et cetera. We got to a point that the school said, you know, we have an opportunity, and the state is forcing us, basically, or the citizens of the state are saying, we need K through two school education. And so the school district says, you know, you haven't built out all four of those ball fields. We're thinking that we'd like to put a K through two elementary school there. If the citizens stand behind us and pass upon to go that kind of a building. But they had stood in an initiative to create K through two. So we are going to need more classrooms and more teachers and more facility. And we looked at it and said, well, you know, we hadn't, we put a million, two hundred million and something into the, this ball field, for the little league and for the softball league and for the playing league. And we cleaned it up. And we said to Ben Small, I says, oh, okay.
Who is, who is "we," man? Who is "we"? You keep saying, we did this, and we decided, and who, who's the "we"? That's all.
Well, the "we" as far as building those ball fields is this council right here.
Well, sir, let's, let's move from the ball fields to the deal that's presently there. And just to make the record...
You asked me, you asked, you asked the question, so I'm going to give you the answer.
Well, sir, would you answer the question instead of dragging us through our half-hour to get there? Tell us who made the deal on there and why.
You have to have a basis. You have to have a basis. Who planned the ball field out there? You did, Odin.
No, sir, I did not, and I could certainly guarantee you that there was never four ball fields discussed.
Katie, go get the plans for the four ball fields. So he can see that they're...
Point of order, point of order.
Point of order. Let's bring it to order, couldn't argue. Let's, let's discuss the matter, couldn't argue. I'm trying to discuss the matter. This is the question. Why did, why do we end up with three acres fenced in with, with weeds in it?
That's right.
Well, the school district, they took back to seven, and their plan inadvertently, or advert, advertently, I guess, put in the fence around it. At this council table over the last, since we built the school, or since we built the school, we talked about what could we put in that, in that acreage? Could we put a field in there? I even brought up, we could put a pool in there. The community came down here and said, we don't want no pool, we don't, and then people in this council and some, and some of the public said, well, we really want a, we really want a ball field out there, we want, and Jennifer, I said, came back and said, hey, maybe we should have something that, an intensive sport field that people could play on their cleats, because in our parks, they're tearing our parks up with their cleats, and so maybe we should have something like that. We should, we, we made an agreement, this council made an agreement with the school district, to jointly care for the green space on Liberty Lake Elementary and Liberty Creek property. And we came, and we provided, and provided in his little excess, a storage unit for our lawnmowers over there, so we could care for it. And they're going to pay for the water for it. And our public all benefits from that. Now, whether you want to build a field there, if you don't want to build a field there, et cetera, we put the money in there, said, this is probably what it's going to cost. Katie came, did a study, or Andrew did a study, and said, hey, this is probably about the cost of what it'd take to finish that field up. We put that into 2018 budget, and that budget was submitted to this council on October 17th, 2017. And all of a sudden, tonight, it's, we got this field, where does this thing come from? We don't know about it. And I know that over the time, and we'll, and I'll have Andy get all the minutes, because we've talked about that field and all that other stuff. Because we've talked about that field and all that other stuff, probably for the last four or five years. Now, you don't want to build a field, you don't want to put six hundred fifty thousand bucks in it? Quite frankly, my idea was to grade it, seed it, put in a sprinkler system, and let the kids and the, and the, and the cleat people play on it. You know, and we, and graded ourselves, and have Jennifer and Krug go out there, hire the guys a month early, and put in a, a basic sprinkler system to keep the grass green. And that's probably about a fifty thousand dollar deal. I'm not sure. Probably like the cost of the arboretum. Well, what do you want to do with it? Do with it. You, you want the money? Don't want the money? Doesn't make any difference to me.
Point of order, Mayor, we have a motion on the floor, and a second. Could we please have a vote on the measure, please?
That was under further discussion.
That was on, he was, he had to be further discussion. Without further discussion, you got Mike?
I, I, I have one. Just one caveat, let me just throw this out. I love the idea that the city owns the land at one hell of a buy. I would be in favor of not getting rid of that land. If the school wants to put the money into it, why don't we consider a joint effort? If they'll put the money into it, because they saved the money, we have an agreement of mowing the grass when they want it, and I totally support that, I think it's a great idea. If they do it, that property, because it's for the benefit of them, and we put it into our agreement, then we will mow it and take care of it. If they want to put the money into it, because really, the money is for the benefit of the kids. That's what it is. And I agree wholeheartedly that, I was out there when the bond was proposed, I was one of the only few, besides certain individuals in this room now, who out there and waved signs, went to doors, did everything possible for the benefit of getting that passed. It was passed. I talked to individuals about, it's, the tax dollar on your property is worthwhile. I agree with that. But in good conscience, I cannot go to the citizens and say, oh, by the way, now I support that we spend the money to develop the land for the benefit of the school, when they save that money. Even if they hadn't saved the money, I feel that they need to belly up to the bar, if it's for their benefit, and pay for the improvements. And I don't think we have to give it back to them. Because we did, and asked to get paid proportionally, what did we get, Mayor, a buck?
No, I'm still waiting for my seven dollars.
Yeah, there we go, seven dollars. I just want to throw that out.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I, I just know it out this way. I love the project, I think it's great for the kids. My issue, and actually, an interesting thing that came up the last few days, and I should have more conversations, especially with Jen, on this idea that, I had no idea that this was going to be, turf was going to be able to be marked, and you could actually do a real soccer game on it, unlike this in our other parks. That sounds great. It just comes back to priorities, and having no idea where that fits in the priority with the big scheme of things, it's just really hard to go and fund it for over six hundred K. There's lots of ideas being thrown around, we've heard community garden's ideas, I think, out there. I think it's just a matter of priority, so it's, I'm going to support taking it out of the budget for now until we're able to come back with how it fits in the long-term strategic plan. So, and it was, I think it was getting sold as a, as a joint project with the school from day one, but really, it's going to be a great project for the community, not just the kids while they're in school. I think a great project for the community was soccer, or Carlos, or football, or something we could actually schedule out there to manage things like, is that right, that I can have him to put in?
That sounds great. But I just don't know the cause of the priority, so I think we should pull it up now. Yeah, it does sound great, it really does. Bob?
Well, I just wanted to support what, what Hugh was saying, and I think that we, we should not fund it at this point in time, because I don't think we're in a position to prioritize what we're going to do with all the other properties the city owns. So I just like to call for a vote now. Further discussion, not hearing all, could you say aye? Close, there you go. Next, A R J.
So just to clarify too, this project is in C I P, so something that's not going to fall to the table as you prepare your strategic plan, so.
Okay.
So, what else do you want to talk about? So what, what we have, we've got six hundred thousand, we're not going to do Madison and Northfield, six eighty has been driven through.
You're going to head upon M B Qs, I mean, wherever you want to go. That's wrong, close.
So how do you want to do it? Is there certain ones that want to jump in?
Oh, yeah, next I can hit plant numbers one and two, I don't remember what the order is.
So one was regarding the increase in police alley shots, and that we ended up having that in October, those comes with customer more, by the increase in the line item, and that was due to the contract.
Well, I had a question about that, because I got on that line item, it said on there, a police clerk, and it was a thirty thousand dollar increase.
So we had an agreement with the city of Spokane, that she is also doing work twenty to thirty hours a week, maybe there, so we wanted to capture that cost as well, because she's getting paid at a higher hourly rate. So we also have on the revenue side, is a revenue to offset that.
Okay, that was really my question.
I'm sorry, I missed that one.
Yeah, that was the line item I was questioning, because it was a thirty thousand dollar increase for the police clerk, and I thought that was, that was quite an increase.
You're quite generous, right?
Yeah.
Then it's specifically with the contract we have with the city of Spokane, they reimburse us, that increase as well.
I appreciate the explanation, thank you very much.
Very efficient staff.
I mean, the second one actually was specific to the equipment replacement reserve.
So in the Q three, I just asked for the data behind the increases for several of the positions. I don't have any further questions once anybody else does. Everybody else, everybody got the data, so I didn't make further questions on that.
Yeah, it was essentially an analysis done with other surrounding cities, to see what comparable they were getting, and bringing them up to speed. And I think that, you know, at the end of the day, it was a good move, I support it. I think that we have great staff, and work really hard, not that they would go somewhere else for higher pay, but we want to make sure that they're getting paid fairly at the same
So the number four, we can still order, not just...
Yeah, that's great, yeah.
So number four was referring to the advisory funds in the city council budget of twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, so, basically, I ask that question, is, I've started, I've worked doing some more training hours through A W C, and on one of the, the legal web series I was watching, they were talking about whether or not council could in fact have their own council, if, if council, is concerned, council. It's not most... If indeed, that is allowed. And so I really appreciate the case law that, that M R S C was able to come back to us into that, again, that really answered my question. Because if we weren't allowed to, I didn't see any twenty-five thousand dollars assigned.
So what is the answer, where you're coming in?
The answer is, it depends. But there's, there's a couple of case laws in, in the email with the answers to the M B Qs. So if you guys want to read that.
Number five was specifically regarding twenty thousand to acquire professional services for the public relations or community engagement.
Yeah, and we had talked about that at some in, I think, finance committee, and I think a couple other times with regards to having somebody come in and help us with regards to our social media and other ways to engage the public, whether it's, you bring somebody in part-time, or consultant, or whatever. But it just wasn't clear in the line item.
Regarding item number five, I think this is a clear point, that something took place in a finance committee meeting, and the rest of us didn't hear about it, okay? Because one of my questions was, is, what are we talking about, needing a, needing a public relations firm? Okay? So, again, the need for distribution of information, and possibly, we're going to solve that with this new idea, okay? So can you tell us where you came up with the twenty thousand figure at, and exactly what would these, this firm or person be doing for the good of the people?
So when we're initially, this came up, it was in the fall, and we, Brian and I, Chief Asmus and I, went and talked to Spokane County, and then subsequently, I spoke with Spokane City, to get information about how they handled social media. What, what kind of resources do you need? What kind of software products? What kind of expertise do you have? And we, and they provided some contact information that Brian and I followed up on. So I don't have anything specific right now, but we, they, they both of the consultants that I spoke to were in that fifteen to twenty thousand dollar range. Quite frankly, at this point, I'm not ready to recommend how to spend that twenty thousand. I'd like, like to bring it back as a discussion to the council at a workshop. I think just putting it in the budget, I, I feel good that it's, it's a substantial amount of money, doesn't mean we're going to spend it all, but it provides options to further improve our community engagement. I think one of the examples, when Jen did the card, the mail card for the snowplow routes, you know, things like that, it was what, fifteen hundred dollars, eighteen hundred dollars to print and mail and design it.
That's pretty good.
So I think that what we want to do, we, and I, I say, we being the mayor and the council, is we want to have a consistent, clear, relevant, and timely messages to our community. And the two quotes I got, either consultant would come and love to talk to you about what services they could provide, I don't think we're to that point of recommending one. But that's what it's for, it's to improve our community engagement. And quite frankly, if we do, when we do, I should say, if you approve the hundred thousand dollars, there's no reason we couldn't combine this into a joint effort between a long-term strategic plan and then the community engagement as part of that. But anyway.
And, and part of that discussion, I remember the meeting a little bit more now, was, it came up a lot around the time we were getting our public requests, you know, and the Facebook engagement, things like that, and, you know, with the hopes that somehow we could learn a little better how to handle that, maybe get the message out better from the city's site, so that we're not trying to answer constituents, so that if somebody does ask the question, then there's a professional that's going to care to give the whole answer.
Like it, thank you for the information.
So, M B Q number six, had to deal with increase in professional services. We started last year keeping in permits, a card of a conference permit, sometimes this can be rather large, so we have an increase in our bank fees on processing. We also are looking at a labor distribution software, so right, and online time for me. So with our current payroll software, we don't have that ability, because we, what's, so really, Steve, our streets guy is kind of creating, was kind of leading this issue for me, because we want to be able to track his time not only in streets, but he's doing also storeful stormwater and with A P, some of the aquifers, dollars too, so I want to be able to distribute those dollars, because there's different weapon sources as well. And the officers have also wanted to do online time machine, so that's the increase in costs. And then state office also.
Archie, speaking of bank fees, when's the last time we've gone out for, for bin on stuff?
Working this year, to go out to, for US. U S Bank is what we currently use, so we'll go out here this year.
Because I knew we'd be done in the past, I just didn't know this.
How long have you used U S Bank?
Well, they were here when I got here, so we went for N R P out three years ago, which we knew that, so.
They've been our bankers since 2001, isn't it?
Yeah. So Bank of Ameri, Bank of America was the other one that bitted on it, and we compared the two costs last time, U S Bank had the better rates for us. And part of it, the bank has to be here in the city, there's a number of requirements.
Thank you.
So, number seven, so this one is for, was a question regarding public assistance, and actually, it's not in the budget for eighteen, so if you want to add it back in, this came from Keith, Keith called us a couple of years ago, suggested about public assistance dollars. We didn't prevent this in anything in seventeen. We do have a line with a line item, it was community business support in Lake Park, so.
No, I'm good, I was just more curious, because I didn't think we had appropriated, we actually spent any of it, so.
We did, we did, in one year, we did two substance abuse of Spokane, in the R, just the class.
It's still in the budget?
It's not in the budget, but I looked back and we actually removed it for eighteen, but we did spend it in seventeen.
Is that what you want to do, that's the question?
No, I just was, wanted more clarification on seventeen, that's all, I wasn't asking anything else.
One of the things, I know that Jay's involved with, is the opioids abuse. And I was wondering if maintaining some funds in there, that that might be beneficial, or sitting in that position.
Well, we have funds for alcoholism and treatment that falls under that portion of it, if I'm correct.
I never really get that that close, because it's such an automatic, we only get, we collect, really, the driving forces would, we collect the liquor revenue profits in there, and then we'll get a bill from the county for alcohol, for alberians, for public assistance from there.
So it's not broken down by?
No, it's not, it's...
It's kind of an automatic in and out, so they, they just put it, get, put it in, and then they take it out for what they want to use.
So how they end up spending it, I do, I have not done that research.
So you have no problem?
So Mayor, was, was the use of that line item, was it also indicated or thought of that it would be used for any individuals within the city that may have needed some type of assistance? Or was it always focused at support by the city to a group?
Well, what we did, going back to the first dollars, and I think you were probably there when Project Access was created, that's for ten thousand dollars, and so it was basically on people that couldn't afford medication at the time.
Right.
You know, and it was, they would, they leveraged it, they get a dollar, they got forty dollars for the medicine, so it was a big leveraged item. And it carried over, when they, kind of when Obamacare came in and all that stuff, so that just kind of flowed along that way. Keith, I think some point in time, we gave it to the, some Spokane partners, Food Bank, or Meals on Wheels, or, I mean, there's some organizations like that. I don't, it has never gone to an individual, you give me a, here's my doctor's receipt or whatever, you're paying for my doctor.
Or for rent, mortgage, utilities.
We always tag it for somebody, it's a nonprofit.
Yeah, nonprofit, okay. Do you see a big need for that? Or do you see a need, not necessarily, it doesn't have to be big, but that kind of thing does help a lot of people when they start talking about their prescriptions.
I, again, I'll let the machine lead that discussion, but my thought is, I think you should add a, a line item in the budget, so you can...
I would agree with that. If I were to ask him, the small audience that we have in this room, whether you realize it or not, how many people that you know have been affected by opioids, and getting addicted to them, whether you realize it or not, is connected to somebody that has. Every person in this room is connected to somebody that has. And a big portion of it is lack of education and lack of resources. People don't wake up and say, I'm going to get addicted to opioids today, just because of the process. So I, I agree with him, Mayor, we should have it available, and start to look at how we can help these nonprofit organizations, because it's in our own city. I mean, we, we have resident people, and we have an R can available in the cars to help them, but it goes beyond that, it's bigger than that.
I went in, I did, example, I went in for minor surgery, a year, months or so ago. You know, they knock you out to do the surgery, they cut off, I came home with a prescription for, was it twenty-five or thirty Percocets? Thirty Percocets, you know? I took one Aspirin, and I was fine, you know? But that, that's kind of an ongoing thing, here's your, you know, had I taken the prescribed dose, right, you know, Percocet twice a day, well, shit, you wouldn't have seen me here.
I hope not.
But you know, at the end of that prescription, you could have been addicted. And I think that's to Jay's point, you know, is that, you know, you don't know. And so I think, I think it's good to have a, a vehicle of funds in there that we can utilize as a council to help market here.
And not only do I think that, I think it would be good for us to have that, I think it's, it's my mission and my goal, and I think we have also think about this, I've tried to put more pressure on the state to do something about this, because they're lacking in that area significantly. I spoke with a mother just yesterday, whose son got addicted to opioids, because he had gone to the dentist, and he's dead. And he was twenty-two years old, and he was never addicted to opioids, referring to the dentist. So I think it's a great thing to try to support.
Well, you know, anything that, I mean, we have some things I don't consider very important, okay? But then something like this comes around, and I do think it's important. Because we, we have a responsibility to the people to do good for a lot of other people, not necessarily just somebody here. So I would support at least funding... So I would support at least funding that line item and getting some money there to, to try to make a difference for somebody that could use it. I would like to make a motion that we fund that at?
Ten thousand, we've been doing ten thousand.
Eight, ten? Ten thousand dollars.
Second.
Further discussion, Nadia Yon, Peter Seidai.
Hi. I was looking for.
Thank you.
From the council to make service. This isn't something our staff is going to, you know, make or act on.
Maybe we can do a work.
There's, there's some great work, I'm gonna, I'll see if I can get somebody to come out and talk to us further on different resources out there because even as our law enforcement, you know, they, they do everything, they get the aim when they can. But sometimes when we approach these people that are addicted to opioids or heroin, we don't know, we know where to direct them. So maybe I can work with somebody from Spokane, regional health, come out and talk to us about some of the different programs they have available for even our community.
So do you want to put it in the budget as a social service funding or opioid addiction?
Yeah, a line item.
No, social service.
Social service, okay.
There's already a line item.
Thank you guys.
Can I make a comment on that one?
Yeah.
I would, I totally support this and voted in favor. I would hope that any funds that we do allocate are directly for individuals that live within Livery Lake.
Mike, I don't know how we would, I don't know how we'd come with that information, I mean, maybe, maybe others do.
It would be tough, and, and.
I think it would be tough, but I think what I'm trying to put across is that that would be our priority.
Sure.
I would be concerned that we take ten thousand dollars and some organization, uh, any organization who deals with individuals elsewhere and suddenly we give them ten thousand dollars.
No, I.
Would it go to good use? Yes, I believe that it would. As most people know, I, I've spent years going out giving talks, trying to raise money for Grupo. And I find there's all kinds of organizations that strictly go out and give talks just to get money from anybody, to give back to their own, especially it's in nonprofits. So I, I, I totally support it, I hope our emphasis will be on, if it lets me, everything we can, or to achieve, shame individuals of what can we do with individuals here? That's all I ask.
The expenditures of these funds always came back to the council as, you know, here's a request, here's where that money come from, and these are the features and benefits and blah, 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 and what do you think about making that expenditure?
Okay, thank you.
The, uh, second community messaging sign.
Is that number eight?
Number eight. The, uh, so total here is, so we, let me back up, so we did spend fifty-five thousand for the sign out here. So, um, your original bid, or?
Say sixty-five?
Fifty-five, fifty-five, but that was low. There was a error that the contractor made, that number should have been closer to sixty to sixty-five thousand.
Higher than we get.
Don't think you're gonna make the same error.
Maybe his math challenged.
That goes, does coincide with the other two bids that we received last year for that one, which one was almost seventy, the other almost seventy-six. So the recommendation is if we're going to put a second community messaging sign, that, that we want a budget number that's high enough and we're projecting that somewhere between eighty and eighty-five thousand. So this action here would put more money into the separate fund, which is the community messaging fund, to put, and which would give them balance in there of eighty-five thousand for two thousand and eighteen.
So I've got a couple of questions, so I know we can talk about this some, RJ, and apologize till I get my calculator out. So we already have, we had already put one hundred thousand dollars into a separate fund.
Correct.
We spent fifty-five thousand, so obviously that's forty-five thousand less. Should have been sixty-five, so we're looking at possibly spending sixty-five thousand dollars on a second one, right? For the sign, don't get into land or anything like that.
So, um, depends on the bids, so we would hope that the budget.
So let's say pessimistically, let's say seventy thousand. So that means we're really only looking at putting twenty, an additional twenty-five thousand dollars out of two thousand and eighteen money into that fund.
So if you're look, if.
Hundred thousand minus fifty-five.
We have forty-five in there now and then you want to get up to seventy, now eighty-five, seventy. So we want to put in twenty-five thousand dollars into that fund.
Well, yeah, I'm just throwing out round numbers just to, because the way this reads the answer, it, it looks like we're adding another eighty, eighty-five thousand dollars to it. And then to add the higher costs as a result of making sure the property is secured, that would open a whole other can of worms because A, that I think the city should have somewhere we can put it. If we don't, we get plenty of easements around this place for other people to put their signs up, like along Apple Way, but think.
I don't think we're going to be buying property to put the sign on. And then depending on exactly where it goes, whether or not the utilities are right there, we have to bring the utilities there.
True.
Remains to be seen. The goal was to, um, find a location that would provide messages to the north side of River District area. Um, they're, we're struggling with where to put it and the ideas that came up would be, um, they're all still open to discussion.
RJ, we, we looked at the community and the number was about eighty-five thousand, is what you thought is reasonable.
That's what we're going to put in the budget.
And there's currently forty-five in there, so you're just asking for an additional forty thousand dollars to be included in the budget. We're not spending the money, we're just making sure we have enough money allocated there. So when we get a bid for half seventy thousand dollars in the budget, get a bid for eighty thousand, we might come back for the bid, right?
Correct.
Okay.
That just sounded.
I think the biggest problem was the land.
Yeah, I think that's really what threw me on, on the answer.
Yeah, and it just went away.
I think the word secure.
Secure, well, I think it's, the nail round is because utilities could be the biggest.
The contract will come back to us and I don't think.
Good to go.
Number nine, this is Greg Dorn, and I feel like we addressed this one in two, three.
Yeah, we did, we heard the.
Number ten, uh, library revenue breakdown.
No, I was just surprised, the reason I asked this, I just, I was surprised to see the revenue going up such huge percentages every year and it just didn't, it wasn't jiving, but that's, oh, yeah.
Okay, that's coming for new construction.
Right, yeah.
RJ, do you want to talk a little bit to why, specifically why do we have just a percentage of property tax to go to the library versus this budget for what the library actually needs?
It's by ordinance now, so.
So when I, back in two thousand and twelve, um, we created, uh, we amended the life, the ordinance that created the library to include a funding mechanism, so the library would have a idea of how to budget year to year. And the mechanism that we came up with was twenty-three point eight percent. And why that's significant, if you look at our total ability for our tax levy rate, which is two thousand and ten cents per thousand. Of that two thousand and ten cents per thousand, since we have a own library, let's say if the library was its district, we would lose fifty cents per thousand. So if you factor in the fifty cents divided by two thousand and ten cents, you get twenty-three point eight percent. So we save twenty-three point eight percent of the property tax that we're planning to correct, will go to the library to help them. That's what they're going to spend, plus they get some money from library fines and donations.
And that way their revenue grows as the city grows, instead of just keeping as a dollar.
Correct. Uh, number eleven, this one, um, Parks Board. So the, the question is, how much money is for the Parks Board? The budget calls out two line items in there for them to make recommendations of how to spend the money. One was fifty thousand dollar line item, one was five.
What's the, what's the item number on that one, the budget number?
You're on page fifty-five.
No, the budget number, MBQ number?
MBQ eleven.
Eleven.
Thank you.
If you go to page fifty-five, yeah? Just looking for one, two, or five.
Thank you.
Um, okay, I guess, so I get some back on the spot as I ask the question. So, uh, we have fifty-five thousand dollars in there, we talked, um, that's, we spent about fifteen thousand dollars on fireworks, um, about twenty thousand dollars on air in the park, so that's thirty-five. So, um, it's an additional twenty thousand dollars for our Parks Commission that just got started, has even had their, their, their first meeting, set a charter, set out their goals and objectives. That seemed, yeah, it just seemed a little high to me, I'm trying to figure out where the number came from.
Do you want, I can, do you want, do you want, we have it on the slide that.
I think you have it on the slide.
So, let me pull it up. So basically, um, we, the professional services, which I've, let me start with two thousand and seventeen, which is the bottom half of that slide. As Chris mentioned, uh, professional services last year were twenty-eight thousand. And then event support, which is, it's everything from supporting the garage sale with porta potties, to Barefoot in the Park, to Tis the Season, Memorial Day Breakfast, we rented the tables, all of that. So that was how thirty-three thousand was what was in the two thousand and seventeen budget, okay? So then with the Parks Board coming on board, we, we want to fund the fireworks, I think, the Barefoot in the Park. The question is, are there going to be other recommendations that the Park and Arts Commission make that will eventually come to council for final approval? It could be art, it could be an event, it could be an activity, I don't know. So if you don't like that number, then we would look for you to give us a change to that number. There's nothing specific, um, you know, it wasn't like we had this something specific in mind, Councilmember Kaminsky. So if you would rather have it be a different number, that's fine.
I was just gonna say, so I did some research into this because I know that there was concern and discussion about friends at the main park and if they're going to continue to fund events. And I did get clarification that they have delegated Kirkney from Longchamp to pay for two thousand and eighteen funds, or just not sure about two thousand and nineteen with the concert and things to that effect. So they're still funding two thousand and eighteen events, so that's good. And I, I would just say, as we think about this number, you know, we're putting in another park, we had events making up there. And maybe that we have a separation of Barefoot and Park, I don't know, um, part of it there, part of it there, who knows? So I'm, I'm not overly concerned about that number personally, just because of how many more parks we're putting in and potential events, I'd rather try to plan a little higher. We have control over what's spent, it has to come back to us and we can say no to any given project that the Parks Committee comes to us with, but I'd rather have that money in there than not have it in there, oh shoot. We should have, we should have had that money there.
I agree with you, I would, just want to draw your attention to two other items and they may or may not be related, so I'm open to whatever you decide. On an MBQ, and I'm sorry, I don't have a number for it, but it talks about the community garden expansion.
Now it should have been number sixteen, I apologize.
Number sixteen?
Sixteen.
Okay. And it's looking for twenty thousand dollars to redo the, um, garden boxes at Rocky Hill. My first thought was this was park-related, okay? Park and recor, I mean, park.
So if I can clarify, I have a one word on, um, expansion that is actually replacing the boxes that are deteriorating.
Right, right, you made that clear, that it was for rebuild. But isn't that, wouldn't that be part of the function of the new committee? To spend money on getting those type of things fixed? Because what I'm seeing, and I'm, uh, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but we've, want to put in fifty-five thousand, total of fifty thousand, and then we come back and ask for a twenty thou, another twenty thousand that actually should be involved in there to begin with. Is, am I?
I see where it ends, these two line items here, we're, we're pulling that context out of the entire park project itself on these two line items, and that's the one you mentioned is the third line item.
So just for clarity, the function of the Parks and Arts Commission will be to make recommendations to policy and recreational fees, that kind of thing, possible events, not operation and maintenance of our parks. So the twenty thousand dollars is, um, a figure to renovate or redo in an operational and maintenance perspective, the community gardens at Rocky. So essentially they're completely different items. The Rocky renovation is truly an operational and maintenance line item.
Okay, and so it's your intent to keep, keep the board out of that type of.
Yes.
Great, got it, thank you.
But they can, they can spend some money on artwork for the city, is that correct?
Sure.
With art, for.
With, they could recommend art.
Is that included in the budget or is that an additional?
It would be an additional, or it could be a part of this number, that's for them to make recommendations. But the way different from the eighteen's, but our nineteen's budget is that it'll come ahead of time, putting recommendations for you to vote on.
I, yeah, the point is they have to be in absolute favor of twenty grand going in there, it's extra, we'll call it, whatever they will come up with, I think it's.
Perfect.
I actually hope we find that it's going to be a grossly low number, that we actually open up a little more for them in the future, but great, great decision.
The goal on the Department of Arts Commission was for advisory and to help us set the numbers and to get the community involved to help them decide what could be done or in, what they like to see in the, in the parks or the community, and so to come to the council with that budget number in August or.
It's not much.
We had a lot of the questions I asked for more, just to get more information so we better understand working.
So do you need a motion on that?
Uh, if you're gonna get this.
It's already done? Thanks.
So number twelve is a Centennial Trail, the twenty thousand for that.
Yeah.
So do you, uh, Jen's here, she would have.
Jen?
I'm glad you're here.
Talk to us.
She's, she's putting her hand down.
Where did this, where did these people come from and why are we hearing about it now?
I, I, I remember this coming up earlier in the year, but not for very, it wasn't a very long time.
Correct.
So I'm going to do my best here because I'm still getting through the Centennial Trail agreement with the council. I've been attending meetings over the last, I think, six months, once a month, there's a Centennial Trail Council group meeting. The group is consisted of jurisdictions, uh, City Spokane, Spokane Valley, uh, Spokane County, Washington State Parks, and essentially hopefully us, that's the goal. Um, we've been working on an agreement, there's an agreement with these jurisdictions to fund, let's see if I can get this right. The funding is twenty thousand dollars for each jurisdiction every year to be on this council committee. And this council committee is a voting entity that ma, that basically manages the entire thirty-nine mile Centennial Trail that runs from top to bottom. Right now Spokane County manages our section of the trail that's adjacent to the city. So ideally, the city is, is interested in pursuing, um, a relationship with the council and being part of this voting jurisdiction. Every jurisdiction pays twenty thousand equally, so Cities Spokane pays twenty thousand, Spokane Valley pays twenty thousand annually. And that's to have equity as a voting member, so there's probably a misbalance. And there will be a workshop, January sixteenth, I've invited Spokane County and Washington State Parks to help answer any questions.
Okay.
We're working on finalizing the agreement, that will come to you for approval. So you will have more information, um, more opportunity to ask the, the actual state parks questions, um, as I'm just learning this to myself, they'll be able to really fully answer questions.
So you're going to be asking that, uh, Centennial Trail Council to come?
Yes.
Or somebody from?
Yes.
Great, thanks.
Jen, that's great information, so what I'm understanding is twenty thousand dollars is the fee for all the cities to be involved in this?
Each city.
Each city, what do we have, four cities?
Uh, City Spokane, Spokane Valley, County.
Three cities and a county.
And Washington State Parks.
So there's eighty thousand there, so I assume that's going to go towards repairs.
Yes.
If it goes over that, I assume they'll come back to us for proportionable dollars.
No, they utilize the funds year to year, they, it, as far as I understand, it never changes if it, if it were to go over. So it's, it's all based on priority and, and they, they manage their maintenance items based on what they have available, funding that.
This, you signed, you signed up with the Supreme Wade, having, the agreement presented two years ago and we basically said we weren't interested at that time because we couldn't delay where the money was going to go. They came, I invited them back, I think, the first this year, and then they came back in and.
They've been asking us to join for a while.
And one of the criteria is when you put in this twenty thousand dollars, you have, uh, you will utilize that money in basically a capital repair, improvement right, so on the trail. But you also, um, we made you, I think in the contract, we were trying to ensure that we had did some of that money spent in Livery Lake on the rest, too. We're putting the money in, it's going to be spent on our trail, not just all out of town or.
Thank you.
So we'll have, so Jen, would you be the representative, we sit on that board, going forward?
Correct.
And then RJ, as part of that, when that time comes, when the board gets here and you ask us to finally make a decision about it, would you also have available the amount of money that we spend annually on the trails? To maintain them?
The Centennial just...
Yes, please. If we contribute to it at all, so...
So you're asking what we currently do right now on the trail?
It would be nice to know how much money we spend annually.
On the Centennial Trail, we have spent no money on maintenance on the Centennial Trail. Today, we've never maintained or picked up litter. There might be some mutual response in the police department, but we haven't provided any resources to the Centennial Trail.
Wow.
We manage the spur trail, they call it the spur trail, which is right off Appleway. There's a, there's a trailhead right there that goes to Idaho. Our city staff maintains that at very low cost, it's very low maintenance.
All right, we'll talk, we'll talk about it.
Who has recognized for 15 years, last, he was the guy that cut the tree that fell across the trail, so cleared it all out.
All right, thank you, Jen.
Okay. So number 13, this is regard to the land and fencing that we're kind of, I didn't sign off at Henry Road.
So Katie and I talked about this a little bit today, because I think we all need to recognize that this is just the first piece of a larger project. And if we fund this, it's not just land and a fence, there's gonna have to be improvements made, there's gonna have to be a building built. So it's, it's not just $185,000, it's just for the land. We're not gonna leave our equipment sitting out there in an open field surrounded by a fence. So this is, I kinda wish this had come up sooner in the process, so we could have maybe even had a workshop on it, because again, part of our strategic plan, I think this is definitely part of it, is, I guess, what's, for me, what's the time sensitivity on making this decision on a purchase? Firstly, I think I'm okay with putting it in the budget, knowing that it has to come back from an agreement, but I heard through the grapevine that CV may have another buyer. Is, are they putting pressure on us to make a decision for this?
So, no, they're not making pressure, they're not putting pressure on us. There's a very prescriptive way that a school district has to surplus land, and they had a public hearing, and they, Ben had received a phone call from a realtor, and he didn't know if the person was in the audience or not, so he acknowledged that phone call. There is no pressure being placed on other entities at this point that I'm aware of, competing with us for that property, I'll say it that way. The school board, as I understand Ben's process, or the school district's process is firstly surplus it, then they have to appraise it, and then they can negotiate a transaction. And if they're negotiating a transaction with another public agency, then they can, they don't have to offer it to the highest bidder, unlike cities, but a school district can sell it to another public agency for below the appraised value, if they so choose to do that. The timing is such that I don't think we're gonna see anything confirming this transaction back from the school board until after the February election on the bond. And so I think that this transaction is probably, the earliest would be spring and probably summer. And it's located on Henry Road across from...
So is this center here, triangle area here?
No, it's further down, further, 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 right there.
Yeah, because I was having a hard time picturing it, because I'm thinking, who really wants a car?
So if you go out there to the rock out propping on Henry Road, yeah, it's closer towards sprig, grass, yeah. And it's, just to let you know, just as far as context, so last year we were looking at a building back here, to store some of our equipment, that was too expensive. RJ and I spent a little bit of time driving around the city to find out what other properties were available. You know, the going rate in Liberty Lake is four to $5 a square foot, and the school district bought this property for 96 cents a square foot. So, you know, there is now, we would have rather had something maybe centrally located, but quite frankly, I think we can manage the travel distance. I just don't know of any other land in Liberty Lake that would even come close to not being under a half a million dollars for three acres. But Chris is right, it is, you know, you have to buy the property, and we have to fence it and do drainage improvements, and then you have to build things, electricity and, you know, you know, an office with a toilet and all those things. So this is kind of the first step.
Go ahead, Mike.
This particular item, I really support this. I really, really do. I've got, I've looked at the land, I've looked at what's being proposed, I look at the development that's happening in the area with the school, with that, there's another entrance into Legacy Ridge right there. The land is gonna continue to open and bagged without a doubt. I agree with Katie that we're looking at $4, $5 per square foot anywhere else. It'd be great if they bought it more, but even if it was $2 or $3 a square foot, it would still be an outstanding investment for the city, especially when you consider eventually down the road, we're gonna have either an overpass there, or a flyover, wherever it is. What better way to come, really, right off that three acres, or whatever we get, and head straight over to the north side? We're taking all that heavy equipment, instead of going over Harvard Road, we're going over, eventually we're gonna know we're gonna have something there. So I agree, we'll have to put in a building and things of that sort there. Great investment, great investment for the city, to be able, if we can get something over the school and pick that land up. Smart, smart move by our party.
Okay. Number 14, this is the rest project, and I probably, I did not answer this in preference, but really I need more information and guidance from council. I need to bring you back some options of what we wanna do going forward. There's gotta be short-term, long-term considerations. We know we have to labor to do something with the current owner and what we wanna do there, so.
That's gonna come up.
No, workshop, or next workshop, we'll have this to be...
Would you read the question?
Oh, sorry. This question is, status of Palinkie's lease after expiration in April?
Rate increase, are they staying? So again, Katie and I talked a little bit today. April's gonna be here before we know it, so we need to make a decision, you know, what we want to do. And, you know, I think one of the options, you know, maybe in front of us is, do we extend, you know, allow them to extend for a year? Talk about, you know, reevaluate the rate, but until we start talking about our master plan, make some decisions on that, A, I don't think we can get another restaurateur to come in there and lease that space, it just needs too much work. B, we don't want it to sit empty, but we also need to be getting fair market value for it. And I know there's some restrictions with us being a city, we can't make a profit on it, but we need to at least recoup, I think probably more of our costs. So I, I personally, you know, that's why I was just wondering about the rate increase, because we only have, we've got the current lease rate in there for the revenue. But I think we need to address this soon and later, to figure out what our options are, so we can start having that negotiation.
I agree with Chris, sorry. I agree with Chris that we need to look at the rate increase to make it comparable to what it should be at. When we're looking at, the term being up in April, my recommendation would be that the new contract with those guys would be no more, because we're gonna be having heavy discussions on our master plan, obviously, and our strategic plan, that it would go out no further than the end of this next year. So we basically do it for, from April to the end of the year. I don't know that I'd wanna extend it much more than that, you know, it's trying to be fair to the restaurant owner, so he can plan out. But at the same time, I don't think we wanna get caught up in another two to three-year contract, doesn't mean either.
I can't recall what the notification requirements are under the lease agreement. Typically, in lease agreements like that, there's a notification of intention to renew, or notification of intention to terminate. Do you know what those are right now?
Not off the top of my head, I can get those information for you, though.
And what party, what party gets the notification? Whether it's, let's say, your lessor?
Right.
Or the...
Let me look at that. I know on this current lease, I mean, basically, the lease expires, there's no renewal options or anything else with it, it's exhausted.
This is, this is the end, so being certain is April or whatever that date is, right? So they're already on notice that this is coming to a termination. So that's one. And then the second thing is, we're sitting here from the standpoint of them saying, well, do we wanna, we, we need to make some kind of plans?
Right, sure.
We don't wanna, we don't go black, maybe, but, you know, so we need to come up with some kind of agreement. That's what we're working on in the next 30 to 60 days. At the same time, we start down our strategic planning, with trailhead and what's gonna happen over there, right?
So one of the options would also, may it be a short-term, 90-day, 60, six-month lease, et cetera, until we get through planning?
Well, I think probably, more than likely, I don't know exactly, I haven't read the lease for a couple of years, but it probably runs almost to month-to-month after, normally when you have a terminated lease, right, you're basically on a month-to-month deal.
60-day notice.
And I'm sure Chewie's over there wondering what he's gonna do, too. So we're both in the same...
I could take care of it.
Okay, great.
Very good, very good, very good. Over the years, over the years with our business, I've had half thousand leases. Generally, they're written to where, even if I had, if it was going to expire on April, generally the real estate company, which here was managing, would contact me about time to get it recorded into that, to try to get what my intentions are. And what they would also look at, they always ask me if I had an interest, and they're like, a restaurant, that's totally different. That, if we didn't renew, would I go 30 days, 30 days from that point on? So the biggest thing they're looking for is that, what does a landlord wanna do, which we're the landlord, and keep in mind that the individual has to make other arrangements, what have you. So I would recommend, if anything, that come the first year, that we're sitting down with them, you know, with lease stuff, and say, hey, here's, you know, what's your intentions, what do you see?
So we can, what I'm hearing is, short-term and rate modification to respect current market. So I think we can sit down, put some ideas together, run them by Chewie, and then because I think that it's eligible for closed session because it's a real estate related, we could bring the options to council, and we could, you know, let you know what's on the table and what modifications you wanna make before we close the deal. But I agree, I think in all fairness to him and to us, we need to kinda get that out. But I'm hearing kinda short-term, say, six months, and then month-to-month after that with a 60-day notice, something along those lines, with an adjustment...
Or even as the mayor suggested, that it could go after, at the termination of this lease, it could still go month-to-month.
Correct.
Unless he walks out and...
And that's the only reason I would recommend doing that, that until the end of the year. So he doesn't just say, all right, I'm outta here, and we have empty buildings. That's why my thought process was...
We'll come to an amicable...
Yeah, no, I, yeah, just wanna make sure that we're being fair with all of that, everybody.
He's gonna be here.
We know we're gonna... There shouldn't be some notification requirements, I know.
Yeah.
I think it's important for us to realize that if he left today, whatever we have there, left today, that's $32,000 a year, okay? We're a $7 million corporation right now. $3200, $2700 a month, it's not gonna kill us. So I think it's advantageous to us to really look at his feelings and his business plan, and what can we do to assist you as soon as possible. But I caution that we don't take the attitude, oh my God, if he leaves, what are we going to do? It's $2700 a month, okay? $2700 a month.
Well, but there's also other benefits with regards to the golfers being there, because I'm sure, you know, we probably don't get a ton of tax money out of it, but, you know, they may be hitting some extra balls, or they may be buying some more stuff in the, you know, in the pro shop. You'd never know what the cascading effect might be.
What we'll be working on, we're not gonna charge your bridge. What's that?
So number 15 was regarding putting the 2017, 2018 fee schedule side by side.
Yeah, thank you for that. I was just curious to see what was changing. And interestingly, luckily, I was going through it, I think we have two typos, actually a total of four. So under outdoor facilities, I think we have the rates for pavilion parks on Monday through Thursday versus Friday through Sunday flip-flop, because we're charging more during the week and less on the weekends, versus, did we flip-flop? Because in 17, it was more on the weekends and less during the week.
Good point. That's how you make your money.
So in 2017, it says pavilion park, yeah, it's shelter planning for Sunday, 35, and same thing for...
Are you trying to ruin our cash flow?
Just consistency, you know.
I appreciate you looking at it, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get those corrected.
Also, one of the things that came up, if I might, on those fees, we're charging less, if I read it right, we're charging less for the use of the ballparks, which are a high maintenance item, than we are for like, usage per hour of the pavilion. You know, are we going to kind of readdress those fees a little?
That is the very first thing I have on the list for our new Parks and Arts Commission, is to review our fee structures.
Thank you.
With this, before we get off this topic, I had this conversation with RJ a little bit. As you're looking at this fee schedule, if you get to the section that says Barefoot in the Park, it says vendor display booth for businesses in Liberty Lake, $50. Vendor display booth for nonprofit organizations, $25. And this is strictly for Barefoot in the Park. My conversation with RJ, and my recommendation for that specific event, as we're inviting businesses and nonprofit organizations to our event, knowing that we're trying to support awareness of our nonprofit groups and our business groups, it's not a lot of money, to Mike's point, the other thing, is that we would make waived fees completely, for Barefoot in the Park specifically.
For the, for the nonprofits and for the Liberty Lake businesses, not for the ones that...
If they're outside, we keep that fee. But for local businesses, local nonprofit, I would like to hear your guys' thoughts on waiving that fee for Barefoot in the Park. I love it.
Is that on page 90? I'm trying to find where you're referring to. Is that on page 93?
It's on that fee schedule, let me check.
2018.
It's on page 93.
Yep.
Specific to Barefoot in the Park, and we're, two is number three. Vendor display for local businesses and for...
Okay, so your recommend, your recommendation is to take the $25 and move it to zero?
And the 50.
And the 50. Okay, so if you wanna make a motion, we'll just do that?
Before we do that, I got some discussion.
Absolutely. I'll make the motion for discussion purposes, how's that?
Mayor, can we legally do that?
And that's why I wanted to bring it up.
I have no idea. And so, this would be my perspective. We leave it alone. Jen takes it, that's her first being, her first part, pardon me, here's your first object of things to do. You check out where we're low, I mean, even on the ballfields. I know that we've had a lot of discussion on the ballfields and being, not collecting enough money, like the City of Spokane or Spokane Valley, and the other things. Let them make those decisions. Come back and say, here's our new fee schedule. Does that make sense?
And I, and I, and I find, I just, and I brought it up because I wanna see if it was even legal, Chris could be able to do that, but...
My concerns are twofold. One, can we legally do it?
Right, absolutely.
Because we've got the other people coming in. The second thing is, is that are there other fairs or times that we ask businesses to show up but pay?
Right.
And how, how we separate the need to pay for one, one type of event and not for the other. So I think the mayor answered, the best answer is, goes back to you again for your meeting with the Parks Commission.
No, I think they're recommending bodies, same as the planning commission is, so they'll be making recommendations. Plus, on the city council, we'll be making the final decision.
And I'm good with that, I just wanna throw it out there for us to discuss. If they, if they like the idea, and we can do it legally.
All right, so you have a motion up?
Yes, so I have a motion up.
And the motion is to remove the money?
Right, and through, yeah, so.
Withdraw.
I want to withdraw that motion, and discuss it again.
Very good.
That was directed for to make sure that...
We get the recommendations on that.
All right. Number six is regards to the community garden box.
Yeah, we already talked about that, yep.
Oh, I did have a follow-up question on that. So, so, so these are for the ones at Rocky Hill, how are the ones next door doing? Are they, they are similar?
And the ones at Rocky Hill, we're anticipating replacing with those, instead of the wood.
So number 17 is plans, what are the plans for Cameron and Trails Pass? So, Jay, could provide information on that and any other questions?
Yes, I've asked this question in the past, and I'll ask it again, because it talks about new cameras for new locations. Have we had that discussion finally of where they're gonna go? Have we had that discussion finally of where they're going to go, or how many we're going to get, or?
So I think that the document does stand out, have the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen locations, of all the future plans for cameras?
Does that cost, do we have any significant ongoing recurring costs with those?
There's, yes, so there's internet connection fees at the location.
Are they?
It's forty, so, sixty?
Sixty.
Sixty dollars a month for the connection.
Each?
At each location. But they're used for multiple, they could be used for multiple things, so we share connections for the street irrigation systems, the wireless irrigation systems.
That's a lot, I've got a company you can talk to.
What's a dollar amount of budget for that? Do they have a budget?
Dollar amount? So I have set aside the, it's a, it's a, it's a police capital fund. Police capital fund that we pay for the cameras. Each camera location is about five thousand dollars, but again, depends on proximity of electricity and internet connectivity. But for a site that's fairly close in, that has easy access, give you this example, we put a camera just up on this year on the trailhead, at the pro shop, they're mounted, so pantill zoom monitors the intersection and the golf course, and I think that was less than five thousand dollars, because electricity and connection, internet access already.
So all of these would be permanently mounted?
Per, they can be moved.
They can be moved.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, that's a question. I know one time you gave me a tour through the facility over there, was talking about the city of Spokane has small cameras, they can put in trees, things of the sort here, and you can be monitoring on your computer and patrol guarding stuff. Do we have that capability?
So all the cameras that we have currently set up, including our new trailhead, are all IP-accessible cameras, so I can pull them up with my smartphone right now, all the cameras.
Okay. For the benefit of the council and citizens, is that I've had a lot of experience with what the city of Spokane has with cameras and stuff, because where we had all these typos and stuff, a lot more near parks, in areas of drug trafficking, case, maybe, there's always concern. What we found was when the city of Spokane went in, and the word got out to the bad people, that there were cameras around, you never knew where they were. And what happened is that our vandalism went from, went down to literally zero, literally zero. I thought it was a great success that they had there. I'm really excited here that you guys have that capability.
Definitely a force to multiply for us.
I'd love to see one put over by the dog park, I know that's county. I'd love to see someone over there to get the drug trafficking and stuff.
I don't know if you want to see one.
Yeah, you don't want to see a dog.
So Chief, are all these law enforcement use?
No.
Yes, so they're secure cameras, the IP addresses are sitting on our server at the police department, and so there's not public access to them.
And do you have a central location that you have somebody viewing these, such as the clerk or whoever, can they sit there and watch these cameras?
They can, we don't do that. Again, each officer can pull it up from either a smartphone or their computer.
One at a time, right?
No, they can, they can, all the cameras at one time, if they want. It's, you know, seven, eight frames, they can view them all at the same time. All the video images are captured on our server at the police department, they're kept for a period of time, so if there's an event, we can go back in time and review footage.
Okay.
And they're also on motion sensors, so they're not recording all the time, so they wouldn't detect the motion.
That's nice. Do any of these contribute or are used in parallel with the stolen car license plate readers?
No.
Thank you very much.
For the, for the cameras that are going to go in for two thousand, or for the future, there's one specific that I've been looking at, it looks like roughly signal in Liberty Lake Road. With that one, are the cameras at a point that they can see at night?
Yes.
Even without lights?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
So we have, we have a camera if you want to take a look, that sits on the back of the barn at Rocky Hill, where there's a facility.
No light?
No, and so we have really good, catch all kinds of wildlife running around.
Oh, really?
But, yes, they're very, very good at the neighborhood.
Okay, and not to throw a wrench into this in any way, shape, or form, but I think in the road, as we talk about our master plan and the strategy plan, and we start looking at our different trail systems, the cameras, safety for our citizens, I would like us to assess in the future, looking at lights along the trailhead, golf course trail. We have a lot of drug use in that area. We've seen boards built where kids are smoking weed in the tree area, we've had some incidences where people have passed away along that trail, and if we had it more lit up, it's safer for our community of runners and walkers at night only, not only, but it makes it easier for law enforcement, and probably detours the kids from utilizing drugs within those wood areas. I know that he was on a ride along with me, and we had to go down there and search for somebody that was missing, so.
So let's just have the question, Chief, and that's going along, Shane saying is, we have the capability of having lights on solar, is that correct? We just have a solar powered light, so we don't have to run power out there?
Yes, you can.
So I guess the question is, what do you think, could we put five or six solar lights out there?
For the lights, you're talking about the lights, not the cameras?
No, do the cameras, just in, just in the future.
I'm just saying initially, if you're thinking we should have lights out there, where can you put the lights out there, then you have a place to put the cameras on. You should get the lights out there right now.
So the trick, I think, with the, so two different things, I understand you're trying to combine them, but even though we can get the power from the solar with the lights and the camera, we still have the internet connectivity.
No, I understand, I'm just talking about lights right now. If it's dark, and we need lights out there, that's a good idea.
Great.
How much do they cost?
Come on, you don't have to go back to your.
Now I'm getting my peat.
Put that in your fin, put it in there.
Mayor, let me ask you a question. Talking about that whole section, okay, Long Liberty Lake Road, is it within our review just to go in and clean out that wooded area so it can actually be seen from the street?
Well, it's some of the sewer, sewer district property. And we got into trouble one time.
Yes, we did, I remember that now that you said it.
So, we, we could work with the sewer community. Katie, work with the sewer, because you're at the, they'll give them something to do un-molified in January.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not saying fill it in, I'm just saying cut it down so you can see.
And we do make, I will say that law enforcement does make a really strong effort to monitor where most kids, and they control the area, and we, law enforcement tries to take those boards down where we know that they're using their drugs, but then they usually just pop up somewhere else.
Maybe we just clear that out for a step anyway.
Yeah, I think a great point that just came up, and Katie or Ann, other person, is can you make sure that property shows up on our January ninth conversation about long-term strategic planning, and just get it on as a priority to discuss with some of those next.
I'll say just, we had an issue that Shane brings up, is that the, we worked with the sewer wire district from a law enforcement standpoint, they've been great to work with, helped us with clearing those boards, putting up no trespassing signs, so it's been very cooperative in trying to come back there and. Thank you. Great team. So there's actually two questions in this one. First one, does our right to rent pavilion at Pavilion Park include concessions, and yes, it does. So just one right. And then we just, we talked about the second one, which was during Barefoot Park, can the fee for the local vendors and nonprofits be removed, and that will go to Parks Commission? Parks, Parks Commission, I call it Parks, I needed to say that. So, that's it?
That's it? Before we adjourn, I forgot.
We've got a budget.
We've got a budget.
I know. Before we finish our discussions, I'd really like to comment on strategic plan we talked about a lot tonight, that I met with the mayor and Katie Allen, I guess in May, and trying to develop some strategies for, for the plan. And then back in September, I sent you all an email, you probably deleted it off your file by now, but I made copies, copies of the email, because I made some suggestions on what I thought the scope of the strategic plan should include, and it might be a good starting point for us on our discussion on that date, and give you a chance to look at it and see if you have any questions or comments for that meeting. So I'll just give you copies of that.
Great, thanks.
And I think I gave to Michael, because he wasn't here then, but. He probably deleted hers too.
Only if she's smart.
I probably, I don't, I haven't deleted it.
Anyway, this is something that we'll need particularly for our discussion, and also if we're going to hire a consultant for, I guess we have to have some scope of the project. Thank you.
I'm ready to pass a budget, Mayor.
You want to make a motion, pass the budget?
So you want to have a motion, needs to include amendments?
Right.
As amended.
I will make the motion to pass the budget as amended.
Do I need to read that end, though?
Oh, sorry.
Second read. That's okay.
That's right, because it was the second.
Second read, okay. Ordinance number two forty-seven, City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington. And ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, adopting a budget for the period January one, two thousand eighteen, through December thirty-one, two thousand eighteen, appropriating funds and establishing salary schedules for established positions.
I will make a motion to pass the ordinance number two forty-seven, looking at.
Second.
Now you know, before, now you know why Ian was recognized by a.
She's got the emergency brake.
Bring your discussion.
My discussion point is, I have a question. If we decide at some point to establish replacement reserves for assets later, will that require an amendment? It's only, it's a transfer from the general fund to a specific reserve, just a transfer between those two accounts. Would that require an amendment to the budget? It would require amendment to the budget. It would, because we're appropriating dollars out of general fund to move over to another fund, so that creates kind of a transaction, and it would be a great amendment, because you're going to have a lot of detail and backup behind it to do it.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Before we vote on this, any comment, because two ordinances probably gets to me at the last thing.
Probably.
Probably. You as a public. She'll tell you in a moment, which is pretty. Okay. Without further delay, then, no further comments, so ordinance number two forty-seven, I'm ready to write in, I count six out of six, right?
That's it.
It's adopted.
Very good. Mayor, I would like to ask your indulgence to discuss one more bit of business, please. I think probably more than myself knows about this, but recently it came to my view that Rockwood Clinic here in Liberty Lake is going to be closing down their physical therapy department there. I can tell you it's heavily used by us Liberty Lakers, okay? They do not plan to have a physical therapy unit there at all anymore. They're going to, my understanding, they're going to take the urgent care section, move it over, and house them where the physical therapy department now is, and enlarge the family medicine practice at that location. I have no idea if this is a good move or not for them. And I understand, you know, that they have budgets to meet, et cetera. But I'm wondering if it's, if it's good for us as a city, that we lose the physical therapy end of it. And is there any way that we can communicate? First of all, do we have a desire to communicate to them? Okay, would be the first question. And then how would we go about talking with them and saying, hey, you know, our opinion is, we would like to have that stay. If you have to get another building or whatever, you know, sure, it's easy for us to say, just do it, but that we really appreciate the physical therapy, and thank you.
So we could try a little bit of the ladies.
It's not a bad idea, they got a few of everything.
It's so off.
Yeah. Liberty Lake Spa, all right.
So I would make a motion.
Don't they have physical therapy at the athletic club?
It's a different group.
So they, to answer the question, Councilmember Linkford, MultiCare purchased all the Rockwood clinics, and they're a large, large organization, and they're the organization that is making that decision. The gal from the head of government affairs at MultiCare met with some of us, she would be the individual to reach out to if we have concerns about it. So, and she's also talked about some different funding strategies, which I brought up with RJ, that they can help source toward our different projects, I E., sorry, RJ, which was the, Fong Heroes.
Yeah, Fong Heroes.
The payback kind of stuff. So, but that would be the individual he would, he would want to reach out to.
Well, for your comment, I will talk to Greg Romero, tell him about this conversation at our council. Greg Romero is the vice president of MultiCare, Runway Hospital, I think he's in charge of most of the organization. He can get us to the right.
Place.
Place to talk about that, is, you know, even, you know, if it's, is it office space or is it just a box that they're looking for?
Right.
What is, you know, and maybe it's, maybe it's, you know, if you have this type of organization, maybe it's a mobile organization, maybe they come out and several mobile things, because everybody else has the same problem, I don't know. But I will have Greg Romero try to give you an answer to that question.
Well, Mayor, thank you, I appreciate that, because it's, you know, when we have something, it's nice to keep it. We just kind of hate to go backwards with that, so thank you very much for doing that.
Before we go, I just want to talk about, Katie, did you get all of that information to, for the night reading out to these guys? You said, I got a copy.
Yes, so in their boxes is a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that Rick Romero gave to the city of Spokane this week, and it has to do with strategic planning, and so take it home, read it. Basically, Rick Romero is, was a retired employee that Mayor Condon brought back. Mayor and I spent a little bit of time with him yesterday morning, and he is an incredible individual, very talented. He was a professor of some, of higher ed at Eastern before he ended up with the city of Spokane, but he helped bridge a gap that was existing between the council and the mayor in Spokane, bringing them together and putting together a strategic plan with a vision that was rolled out last Monday. So in your boxes is a copy of his presentation. We did invite him to come to our January ninth meeting, but I want to confirm that that's okay with you, because what he can talk about is what Spokane did there. I think the outcome is different, but the process might help us. And what they did, rather than the, they had every council member kind of be part of a subcommittee of a priority. Their discussions were always all together, but for instance, let's say two council members are interested in public safety, and two other council members are interested in finance, that when you have your workshops, those two council members are front and center at that workshop for those subjects. So it was kind of interesting. But just something to think about, he might help us understand the process, I think he said it took about twelve months, eighteen months to do theirs. Ours is probably more facility-oriented than theirs, but this guy is very, is incredibly smart, and I would love for him to share with you his ideas.
Also.
But you have a.
But you have a copy of his presentation.
It's not a framework of.
Of the framework, and the outcome of their work is, a copy of that is in their box.
As we talked, just before we end for the upcoming meeting next, we talked earlier about having the committees come in, we'd come in at five, have we planned this out to actually a start date? Have we planned this out to actual a start date? Like, is it going to be the next meeting? Are we looking forward to? What would work for staff too?
Yeah, I think, boy, I'm open to, you know, your guys' ideas. It seems to me that we're going to have our first workshop on January ninth. And at that time, we're going to talk about the long-term strategic plan. Maybe what we do is we spend the month of January to think about the committee structure. And kind of, we also have to rewrite the council rules because our city clerk told us that we're changing our council rules and procedures. So why don't Ann and I kind of work on some drafts, bring it back to you guys to look at? And we could probably do that in January.
Perfect.
Yeah, we're not getting very likely reelection of the positions until the sixth meeting in January anyway, so.
Perfect.
At our workshop on January ninth, we will be discussing trailhead. Or are we putting that on the back burner? Okay, the back burner, and talk about the overall plan.
I heard that the majority of the meeting will be the latter.
Yes, right. Eighty, twenty.
Ninety, ten.
But sometimes we have, sometimes we have to have discussion on the NAD at 1.7 million dollars. And also what are the alternatives for the short term?
Yep.
You could, you could, you could, well, you could catch it.
Thankfully, Lenders on our side.
Coming out, is Katie, anything?
So our next meeting is January second. And Ann, can I borrow this real quick? It's probably easier. We do have mayor and council roles, so that all got moved to the sixteenth, correct? So Ben Spoll is going to be here. He's going to talk about the bond measure. And also there's a resolution for your consideration to support the bond. We're going to be surplusing some police equipment. And then we are also updating our financial policy and RJ will cover the details of what that looks like. So at this point, it's a pretty light agenda on the second.
Like that.
The ninth will probably.
So where's the ladies' party?
I have a question.
Coin case.
So what time did you want to start the workshop on January ninth? I don't, if that got nailed down, I missed it. Did we want to start the workshop on January ninth at six or seven?
Probably six, I think it best, I think.
It's good for me. You? Six. Six sounds good.
Six P M.
Okay. Any further, nothing citizen comments? This is your last chance. I agree. We're out of here.
Good meeting.